Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 2nd, 3 o'clock edition of the Board of Supervisors meeting. You folks that are standing are welcome to sit. I'm a southern Baptist, so I know what it means to get a quick escape. But come on down front, we've got plenty of seats. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Baumke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Mulday?
Here.
Ms. Sellers? Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Sterling? Mr. Thomas? Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have Ms. Sellers, and Mr. Sterling are caught in traffic. Mr. Thomas is not going to be with us today. He's representing the Commonwealth at the National Counties Association Leadership School in Washington, so quite an honor for him and for us. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Shover to join me down front.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you. Good.
You volunteers that are here, come on down. Join us up on stage. You only have to give a three-minute speech. We'll cut it to two if you'd like. While we're waiting everybody getting up here, these are the folks that volunteer every day in our county for absolutely no pay at all. They do it because they want to give back to the community, and we're gathered here this afternoon to recognize them. Whereas one foundation of a decent and just society is the willingness of people to work together for a common good through volunteers mobilized to help those experiencing a variety of problems and issues. Whereas Citizen Assistance Volunteers provide switchboard reception services at the George Gordon Government Center, and during the past year, responded to more than 100,000 requests. Past year, Citizen Assistance Volunteer Teams gave more than 40,500 hours of service. The Board desires to call attention to the dedication of these citizens, and in particular, to recognize volunteers who have contributed a significant number of hours. Now that shall be resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, that we hereby recognize and commend all citizen volunteers.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to continue as, I'm going to read off the names of some very special volunteers that we have in the county. These volunteers that I'm going to read off now have given the county of Stafford over 200 hours in the past calendar year. Jarrett Apicella, 328 hours. Bradley Shelton, 231 hours. Jane Connor, 589 hours. Ms. Charlotte Crisman, 890 hours. Melissa Habayeb, 343 hours. Adam Hager, 218 hours. Doris McAdams, 200 hours. Cecilia Miller, 772 hours. Debbie Murphy, 248 hours. Robert Podlesny, 267 hours. Pat Riddelmoser, 600 hours. Valerie Hart, 260 hours. Nick Kopczynski, 1,778 hours. Dave Kwakawski, 387 hours. Mark Seymour, 949 hours. William Smith, 380 hours. And William Tigner is 207 hours.
Let's give him a round of applause. Nick, you just don't stay home, do you? Let me present this to you, Jeff, before you hand out individual awards, because I know you're going to hang it in your lobby, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
On behalf of all of our volunteers here in Stafford County, it's my pleasure to say thank you for recognizing us. Board members, I'd like to thank you as well for taking time out of your busy meeting to recognize these wonderful people. My name is Jeff Shover. Again, I am the manager of Citizens Assistance and Volunteer Services Office. I am going into my ninth year with the greatest job in the world here in Stafford County, and the reason that is, is because I get to work with such wonderful people that are here to my right. These people are selfless. They come in to work hard every day, and they give absolutely 100 percent to their community, which is really something to be thankful for, and I really do appreciate each and every one of you, every day, giving back so much. The savings that we have, as was mentioned before, is over 40,000 hours for the second
to the board, and a few folks in the back could exit quietly, please.
straight year, which equates to about a little over $1 million in staff savings for the second straight year, so we are very proud of that.
If you folks in the back could exit quietly, please, you're welcome to stay.
So once again, please, let's give all of our volunteers a big hand. Thank you.
If you are exiting, please do so quietly.
I'm going to hand these out, and then I want to take a quick pic.
Good afternoon, Dr. Benson.
Afternoon. Chairman Snellings, members of the board, Mr. Romanello, thank you again for the opportunity
Can you take a quick pic, please?
to share a little bit about things that are going on in our school system this afternoon. I really appreciate and look forward to the opportunity to coming to talk to you all
Thank you guys very much.
on a regular basis. It really, you know, it's fun.
Thank you very much.
I enjoy it very much. Slightly eclipsed today, though, I had the opportunity to attend the last performance
We'll see you soon.
of the Colonial Forge Jazz Choir just before coming over here today, and really incredible. I mean, our young people in that group, the level of performance is just amazing. They recently performed at the Kennedy Center, and we were there to recognize them, and from our end of it, we got the opportunity to hear a performance of a number of their favorite selections. And when we got done, I had an opportunity to talk with them a little bit. It's pretty interesting, compelling, that you can have a group of young people engaged in a level of performance that evokes an emotional response, and I'm not kidding you. I mean, listening to them, I was at points tearful, and it was just amazing. And I told them, I said, "That's a real talent," and that's something that is deeply rooted in the visual and performing arts that, you know, I mean, I like math, but I don't get that same feeling with a calculus problem. So, and I asked them to really embrace that throughout, whatever was coming for them next in their careers. And I did ask them a little bit about where, you know, what their plans were. There's probably about two-thirds of the young people in the group are seniors, and will be graduating later this month. And it's really interesting what they saw as their career paths. A young lady that wants to be an archaeologist, another one that wants to be an engineer, a teacher, a music producer, lots and lots of varied interests. And we're in this class together, embracing and experiencing the arts, which is something that I would hope that all of our young people would have an opportunity to experience. You know, it certainly stands to enrich their lives at some point in the future that they might not even realize at this point. And being able to pull on someone's heartstrings as a part of a performance is, that's pretty incredible, and so just thankful that I had that opportunity today. Slightly eclipsing the opportunity to talk with you all this afternoon. Lots of things coming up as we wrap up the end of the school year and actually start to begin to think about what we want to do differently going into the next school year. We're looking forward to day-to-day and the partnership that we have with Sheriff Jett, and, you know, it's an incredible experience. That's on June 9th. We certainly invite any and all of you to attend if that works out for you during the course of the day. It tends to be a little warm from my experience last year, so just, I would say, dress appropriately. On that same day, June 9th, we'll be having our Boots 23rd Open House from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's on Deacon Road, right across from the Food Lion. Another incredible example of our kids involved in some authentic, real-world kinds of experiences, the construction of a home for sale, and we appreciate the partnership and how we've been able to work between schools and local government to make that a great experience. June 13th, graduations. Looking forward to having you all in attendance at graduations across the county. And then on June 22nd and 23rd, you'd think school's over, right? Teachers might want to have a little bit of a break. We have a number of teachers that are coming together with administrators and central staff to begin to work on a curriculum framework for the division that we think will help to raise expectations across the board in terms of what our graduates are able to do. I've told you all before, talked about, you know, we are very successful as a school division in meeting the requirements set forth by the Commonwealth of Virginia, largest percentage of fully accredited schools in the area, meeting those benchmarks year in, year out. At the same time, there's probably more, I think, that we would want our kids to experience, and how are we representing that in our curriculum? A number of divisions throughout the Commonwealth have already done this work, identifying what they might call learner competencies, or graduate profile, learner profile. We haven't done that work yet, but we think that that's something important for us to do, that curriculum that will connect across content areas and allow us to increase the complexity of experience that our young people have kindergarten through grade 12, so that we're able to build upon what students experience in one grade as they move on to the next. And they're really broad kinds of performance standards, you know. Is it important for our graduates to be able to develop and defend an argument? I think probably, and that's something that is not overtly represented in Virginia's standards, to be good problem solvers, to be able to communicate well, both verbally and in writing. I'm not sure exactly what, you know, our competencies will end up looking like. It's important that we involve staff in the development, but it is very much aligning expectations with what the workforce in colleges, I think, would like to see in order for our young people to be successful, and then making sure that we're measuring those outcomes as students progress through our school system. So we're excited about beginning that work, and again, we're beginning that conversation with a group of teachers, administrators, and central office staff, beginning on June 22nd. So with that, that's the end of my remarks for this afternoon. Be happy to try and respond to any questions or concerns that you all might have.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Any questions or concerns or comments for Dr. Benson? Ms. Sellers?
Gosh, I can't even remember what day it was now. I rode the school bus, and you guys, you guys set that up, and it really opened my eyes, I think, to some of the living conditions that some of these students have, and it gave me a really good appreciation for what a bus driver knows about our students. I think teachers see, and I've said it a couple of times, the teachers know our students better than anybody, and they do help our students grow and become who they're going to be, but bus drivers know what's going on at home. They get to see, and it really did open my eyes, especially to Old Forge. I've never been down, I didn't even know Old Forge existed, to be honest with you, coming from North Stafford. I heard about it, but I had never driven through there, and it was, gave me a true appreciation. I do have one more request for you, though. There was a student on that bus who told me he was failing his government class and was about to graduate at Stafford, and I just want to know what it takes for me to go pay him a visit. He said he thought government was boring, and he didn't know why they had to learn it, so.
We'll see what we can do to help out there.
Any other questions? Ms. Baumke?
Just one other question, and I know there's been a little bit of information batted about in the community about this, but I believe the school board has made a decision on this, but that's why I'm asking. I'm not positive. The STAT program at Stafford High School, those students are going to have an option to go up to North Stafford, or can you just summarize for me what's really taking place?
That's correct, and that is, it is not related to efficiency. It's related to a staffing challenge and appropriate certification to run that course. And so, as much as we would have liked to be able to find an instructor with appropriate certification in order to keep the program at Stafford, we were not able to do that, and we want to ensure that our young people have access to the program. So at this point, that is our solution going into this next school year.
Okay, so those students would go up there for half a day?
Correct.
So it would be the same as Commonwealth Governor's School, but then if they choose to stay at Stafford High, that's fine, too, and they'll just be looking at a different curriculum?
That's correct. We, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Benson? Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate what you do. You've had a great year, a couple bumps in the road, but you handled them well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. This time, we'll do presentations by the public. I do have one speaker card, Dana Brown.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way, and I live out in St. George's Estates, and I'm a public water customer. And I'm here because I would like to ask you guys to consider having the Utilities Department or the Planning Department note somewhere in the record where the sewer lines and water lines are for their customers. It doesn't have to be to scale, just, you know, just kind of a, you know, a general location would be okay. Right now, if you're a county sewer and water customer, you have no idea where your sewer and water lines are. They're private, and they're not recorded anywhere. And this came to my attention recently, because I was doing some home maintenance, and I was worried I might have some trees, possibly, in what I thought might be my lines. I called Miss Utility. They came out, spray painted the yard except for sewer and water, and I called back, and they said, "Well, Stafford says you don't have sewer and water lines." I'm like, "Well, yeah, I do." So I called up the Utilities Department, and they said they don't mark them because they are private. I'm responsible for them, and they only mark things from the water meter to the street, which is like a foot, so they didn't bother to come out. They told me there was no record of that anywhere. I got passed around, everybody was very nice, by the way, at the county. Utilities trying to help me a lot. I ended up over in code to discover that, yes, my water and sewer lines passed inspection, but there was nowhere noted on any ASBILs or any plans where they were located, and it was suggested I contact my builder. Well, I've lived in that house 15 years. I said, "Okay, I know how this is going to go. I'm going to call Atlantic Builders, and they're going to tell me, 'Who are you, and why do we care?'" To my surprise, they were very nice, so nice that one of the guys, named Jean, offered to come out for free and try to help me locate them, because the only choice I had was to start digging, or, you know, go find somebody that had one of those divining dowels or rods, you know, the Y-stick. They came out, spent a half hour, didn't charge me, and we're 90 percent certain we know where they are, but it was not where the Utilities people thought it would be. So basically, anybody, like I said, that's on county sewer and water, you have no way of knowing where your pipes are, and it turned out mine didn't have run underneath my driveway. And, yeah, I probably do have some trees close by I'm going to take care of, but somewhere, if we could just note that somewhere, and when the inspector goes out, "Yeah, they're underneath the driveway, or, yeah, they're on the left side of the house," something, so the customer doesn't have to dig up their entire yard looking for this stuff. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. County Administrator, you might want to check with Utilities. It sounds like a good point to me. I never knew that, so we'll check on it, yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber would like to speak on any subjects this afternoon? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public presentations, bring it back to committee reports by board members. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I attended the home builders' reception, which was good over by Mary Wash, although I think we had more elected officials there than we did builders. I did have an opportunity, though, to talk to a few people about the open space requirement as it relates to the cluster ordinance, so that was good conversation. Also enjoyed the annual sheriff's banquet at Mount Arapht Baptist Church, and thank you very much to the church folks for everything they did that night, and that was a wonderful event, wonderful event. Also had the opportunity to congratulate and celebrate Corey Lando, who received his Eagle Scout Award this past Friday night, and he constructed an outside learning environment over at Conway Elementary School. And his project, some trees were cut down, and basically he took logs and then created a bench, and so now the students at Conway Elementary have a place to sit when they're outside, so that was neat. I wanted to say that to the public, we had an outpour of people coming to the landfill this past weekend for the hazardous waste disposal, and we had more people than we ever expected, and the lines were really backed up down Eskimo Hill Road. I think there were 600 people, Mr. Dayton indicated, so just a little apology that sorry people had to wait, but that's what it takes to get your hazardous materials dumped. It took a little bit longer for that than usual, and they did make some changes and moved everything over to the commercial side. And also, I attended the Lake Mooney family dedication for Jason Mooney, and that was quite a nice event, and under difficult circumstances, but the Mooney family, I think, was pleased that Jason is there in their memory forever, and everybody in the county. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
Yes, we had an infrastructure committee meeting today, and Supervisor Snellings and Mulday were there with me to discuss, amongst other things, some changes to the Pump and Hall program that we talked a little bit about at the last meeting, but those will come back before the board at the next meeting in June. Also discussed the Crow's Nest Road construction, the gravel road that will make access to that area better for people. Talked about the Enon Road improvements down near Stafford High School, basically from Route 1 to over near the interstate. We discussed the Carl Lewis Building, which is the building the Boy Scouts use up in North Stafford off of Telegraph Road. It had a sinkhole developed in it not too long ago, and so those repairs are now being planned, and construction should be finished within 60 days on that, so we'll get the scouts back in before fall. And then some discussion on stormwater management. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Mulday?
Thanks. The Crow's Nest Road, it's not just a better road, I think it'll, right now, the park really isn't open to the public. This road will allow the park to become open to the public. There's a gate down, they keep it closed, so that's pretty big. The, our board met, Gary and I, Gary Snellings and I, as usual, it's a very regular occurrence, seems like every three weeks or every month, but we're making progress, real good progress there, finally. We have a plan for it that looks like it's going to be a workout. The, I went to a legislators' reception, most, many of the board members, the F-A-A-R and F-A-B-A, the Realtors and Builders Association put it together. I, with most of the board members, went to the sheriff's awards ceremony, which is kind of a bittersweet thing, because I believe it will be the last one where our sheriff is, where, before we change sheriffs, and that makes me sad, because he's been the best sheriff I've ever seen. I also was at the dedication for the Mooney Reservoir, which is, like you said, a beautiful but somber event, and there, but what a wonderful family Jason has, and they always attend. They're loyal Stafford residents. I, and they told me they're always going to live here. I asked them, you know, I asked them if they still lived here, because I hadn't talked to them in a few years. And I did my Eagle Scout ceremony for Michael Anthony Nichols, just around the corner at Register Chapel, and we had a community and economic development meeting right before this meeting, and I really, I don't think anything jumps off of the page. If you're interested in anything, you can look on the agenda, and I'd be happy to discuss it with you. And that concludes my remarks.
Ms. Sellers?
We had a tour of the public and private day schools kind of in the area. I went with Ms. Kraus last week for the day school committee, and on the 15th, I'll go and represent the county with Ms. Kraus on the Commission on Youth to discuss day school and private day school, public day school fundings. And that concludes.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. The Lake Mooney dedication, of course, was last week, and we're getting a lot of questions about the lake, as to when it will open. It has a capacity of about 5.2 or 3 billion gallons of water. It's about a little over 3 billion in it now. Probably will not be ready for public use until Memorial Day of next year. They've got to build trails, and the boat ramp has been completed, but the water level is not high enough to use it. The lake has been stocked by gaming inland fisheries, but fishing will not be allowed for at least three years, so those fish can mature. So you're looking about, right at another year before this thing will be ready. Attended the first, at least the first that I'm aware of, mayor's and chairs' meeting, where the mayors, local mayors and board chairman got together for a regional meeting last week. I was there, Mayor Fredericksburg, Chairman of Spotsylvania, and King George, and the Mayor of Port Royal. Very good meeting. One of the main subjects we talked about was regional landfill, and that's something we feel is going to have to happen. It's going to take some time to get it done, but as time goes down the road, we're going to have to approach this thing regionally. So there'll be more coming out on that. Thank you.
Mr. Schumate?
Defer any comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Romanello?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, before I begin, I'd like to introduce Amy Southall, who's sitting in the audience there next to Mrs. Mulbrecht. Amy is with us for the summer. She just finished her second year at Virginia Tech, and she's interning in the county administrator's office and has hit the ground running, doing a fair amount of work in the office for us, also being Kathy's bodyguard. Tomorrow's a big day for county finance staff, as well as folks in my office. We have a surveillance call with Fitch Rating Agency, as the board is aware. We had one with Moody's last month. Last time we were with Fitch was about two years ago, so we've been in the throes of preparing for that for the last 30 days to provide them with an update on the county's financial situation. Have a quick video before Ms. Porter makes her report. This is the video that was done in conjunction with all of our public safety partners throughout the region, as well as the state, and VDOT, and in June, you'll see more and more of these public service announcements about the Move Over Campaign. Please.
Move Over 1265, Freddy auto accident with entrapment, 95 southbound at the Rappahannock River Bridge, engine nine, Fredericksburg engine two, rescue one, medic six, medic seven, battalion chief one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Porter will come up now to give you a quick update on our work with the Parks Utilization Study Phase II, and as part of that, she'll provide an update on some of the smaller projects that are happening throughout the county's park system. The board is provided with a monthly update from Mr. Hoppy on the larger projects that are happening throughout our park system. While these projects are certainly smaller in scope and in dollars, they're very important to enhancing the park system throughout the county, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Porter.
Good afternoon, I'm Jamie Porter, your Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. Thank you for the computer. When I arrived here just over two years ago, I knew that I had a unique opportunity to serve the local community, which was new for me. I'd been at the state level for several years. In order to understand what the community desired and what they needed, the Parks Utilization Assessment provided me with an opportunity to do surveys and community engagement and understand exactly what Stafford County citizens were interested in.
Box 1265, Freddie Auto accident with entrapment, 95 southbound at the Rappahannock River Bridge, engine nine, Fredericksburg engine two, rescue one, medic six, medic seven, battalion chief one.
Each year on average, 45 public safety workers are killed and hundreds are injured in the performance of their job while on the nation's roadways.
In Virginia, we have experienced an increase in the number of our vehicles struck and near misses by passing motorists while performing our duties.
We work hard 24 hours a day, seven days a week to make our roadway safer for you.
If you see a vehicle displaying red, blue, or amber lights, or workers wearing reflective vests, please give us some room.
Remember, if you see an emergency or service vehicle stopped on the shoulder of the roadway, you must change lanes away from that vehicle. If you cannot change lanes, you must slow down and pass with caution. It's not just a good idea. It's Virginia law.
Box 1265, Freddie Auto accident with entrapment, 95 southbound at the Rappahannock River Bridge, engine nine, Fredericksburg engine two, rescue one, medic six, medic seven, battalion chief one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Ms. Porter will come up now to give you a quick update on our work with the Parks Utilization Study Phase Two. And as part of that, she'll provide an update on some of the smaller projects that are happening throughout the county's park system. Uh, the board has provided with a, a monthly update from Mr. Hoppy on the larger, uh, projects that are happening throughout our park system. Uh, while these projects are certainly smaller in scope and in dollars, uh, they're very important to enhancing, uh, the park system throughout the county. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Porter.
Good afternoon, I'm Jamie Porter, your Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities. Thank you for the computer. When I arrived here just over two years ago, I knew that I had a unique opportunity to serve the local community, which was new for me. I'd been at the state level for several years. In order to understand what the community desired and what they needed, the Parks Utilization Assessment provided me with an opportunity to do surveys and community engagement and understand exactly what Stafford County citizens were interested in. Phase one of that study focused on athletic fields. Phase two focuses on recreation and maintenance and they both included inventory and assessment, community input, a level of service analysis, key issues and recommendations. There was a consistent message that we found in both phases of the study. They said we should focus on our existing facilities, focus on what we have and improve upon them. And that's what we've been working on. We have done some improvements and upgrades to Woodlands Park, to Curtis Park, to the Courthouse Community Center, Duff's Park, Rouser, Brooks and several other projects. We also have a specific guidance for the delivery of those projects. We are focusing on multi-field facilities and/or parks as destinations. We are using the enhanced maintenance allocation for its highest and best use and we're improving the park amenities within the parks that we have by improving upon water stations as well as parking and, um, restrooms. We're also looking at reviewing our scheduling methodologies to ensure that we are relieving congestion and improving upon the traffic turnover. We looked at determining appropriate locations for maintenance facilities to ensure that we are taking care of our parks, but also the adjacent field, school, the school fields that we are maintaining. And then this year, the board adopted the CIP, which includes improving and/or completing the next phases of Embry Mill, Duff McDuff Green and the Patawamak Park. The studies identified some strengths and some weaknesses within our programs. Some of the strengths include the diversity of the programs that we currently have. Um, also the opportunity for online registration, that we have really good summer camps, that it's affordable for our citizens, um, that we have children's activities and athletics. There's several people that really love our gymnastics program. There were also a few, um, weaknesses that have been identified. Again, the inadequate parking, uh, inadequate restroom facilities, um, lack of resources for the financially challenged and inclusive programming are among some of those things. These pictures show you that not all parks are created equal. So it has the same playground equipment or component in both parks. In one park, you know that your, our customers, our patrons will want to go to the park. Um, the other park, it's missing a few things. And this is a prime example of what it is that we are trying to do with our maintenance dollars. So we take a playground that doesn't have all of the necessary amenities or components so that our customers will want to come. And we improve upon it by adding a restroom facility that you can see there, lighting, some trails, um, a place to get water and then sensory activities for the children when they come to the park. Not in Stafford County. It is an actual park, but not a Stafford County park. Yes, sir. We're sho- sharpening our focus on parking, scheduling methodologies, being strategic about planning, providing premium play experiences, making our parks destinations, uh, nature-based playgrounds, inclusive playgrounds, um, providing a wide variety of sensory activities, doing some theming, making sure we have restrooms and then shade components within our parks. We don't wanna lose sight of the traditional components of a park. There's still a great deal of our community that's interested in tennis courts, basketball courts and then playgrounds. Aquatics. Other than the swimming competitively as well as the, um, the teams that we host, we know that we want our customers to come back to swim with us for fun as well. And so we have to be able to provide things such as wavy, wave pools, lazy rivers and splash pads, so that we're increasing the interest and the users that will come. Trails. We received a lot of feedback about the trails. Folks wanna be outside, but they want them to be loop trails. They wanna be able to return to the same place that they parked their car. Also, the groups that are retiring now, they're interested in fitness. They wanna stay fit after retirement and so they're interested in us having, um, pods of fitness equipment and/or, um, different kind of exercises that they can do along the trail.
When you say the same place they parked their car, do you mean they wanna have a trail end in the same place it started?
Right. Have an opportunity to come back around to where they started. Yes, sir. There are some unique programming opportunities that we'd like to take advantage of. A quick start tennis program, first heat golf, archery. Stafford has an opportunity to provide nature-based, historic, cultural-based programming and we're hoping that the park at Lake Mooney will provide some of those opportunities for us. Uh, the gymnastics center is a prime example of destination-based, uh, facility. We have hundreds of kids that come into that program each week and they come there specifically for one thing, gymnastics. And that's how we would like to lay out the rest of our parks and our facilities. Um, and then adventure sports. We heard that our community is interested in zip lining and boot camps and challenge courses, climbing walls and all-wheel parks. And then dog parks. We have the opportunity this Saturday to do the ribbon cutting on Duff's Dog Park. Uh, we had a lot of community members that came in to assist us with that and we have them that call us every day. They want us, they want to help us to maintain that park. And so we have folks that wanna sign up for hours just so that they can be there to make sure that Stafford County's park is something that can continue for years.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Quick question on adventure sports. Um, what, I mean, obviously that's gonna increase our liability quite a bit. I mean, has, do you have any figures on that, what that's gonna do, or have you got that far into it yet, or?
No, we haven't, sir. This is more about the feedback that we heard from the community and as we have funding to move forward, then we do what we can.
Yeah, I would be a little concerned about the liabilities, because some of these, some of these things that they're looking at here, I mean, that, that could, I can see a lot of broken bones.
It's possible.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, now I'd like to provide you with some photographs of some of the projects that we've been able to accomplish this year. This is Aquia Landing. Uh, Aquia Landing last year was named one of America's Best Restored Beaches in 2014. The Aquia Landing Park is rich in Stafford's history. The picture at the top was the bathroom and concessions building prior to this year. Uh, the picture below it is what we have redesigned and developed for this year. So, because this park hosts a lot of weddings, family reunions and events, we were able to renovate the restroom area to make it ADA accessible and impervious to flooding and we reopened it by Memorial Day and held the first wedding with the new facility on the 31st of May for 2015. These pictures are of the St. Clair Brookes Bathroom, the before and the after. As you can see with the before photograph, um, we had bathrooms at St. Clair Brookes Park. With the after photograph, you can see that we have added lighting, we added ADA accessible, um, walkway or path to the bathrooms. Uh, we also added the AED, a family restroom, and we added a facade so that it kind of blends with that community. Some more cash capital and operations projects that we've completed this year. At the Courthouse Community Center, we have replaced the acoustical tiles. We've done some painting and we completed sidewalk repairs. At the Willamere District, we added a maintenance facility to protect our equipment as well as some of our materials. And at St. Clair Brookes Park, we added bleachers, irrigation at the rectangular fields, new asphalt backboard rims for the basketball courts and we repaved the entry to include ADA spaces for the playground there. First two pictures are additional pictures of the improvements at St. Clair Brokes and the third picture is Smith Lake Park Concessions. At Smith Lake, the concessions building had become a maintenance building for our staff. We are currently building a maintenance building. In fact, it's almost done. We still have the flooring to do. So we turned the concessions building back into a concessions building. It currently offers full-service concessions and we're adding a patio so that people can sit outside and eat. These pictures are of Duff's Dog Park. The white dog at the top is mine. That's Angel Kylie. She's a Maltese, nine pounds and you can see she's by herself. I wasn't certain about bringing her there for the first day, so I did some photographs before the first day. Um, that is the small dog park, dogs under 30 pounds. The next picture that you see there below it is the ball throwing area. So we have an area for ball throwing and retrieval. It is surrounded by three sides of fencing and then the other side is the river, um, so that we haven't enclosed that side. And then there's a large dog park area for dogs 31 pounds or more and the garden that the volunteers did, um, the bone-shaped flower garden is right in front of the dog park for large dogs. Uh, this also, I hope I said, was partly built and will be partly maintained by our volunteers. We've not left the government center campus out of our improvements. With the completion of the Streetscape project, our community can now walk directly up to our courthouse. Um, because of that and to kind of show off what we've done here, um, we went about making courthouse facade exterior improvements. So we're giving it kind of a facelift so that when folks can approach it, um, this year, we will have completed exterior repairs, painting and refinishing, and then we had some brick and retaining wall repairs to make. On the campus also, we are replacing the white and black signs that have been here for a while with logoed, um, signs that kind of match our wayfinding signs, not kind of, they do match our wayfinding signs throughout the county. Believe that this is more representative of who we are in Stafford County. It is, it, it makes a big statement for our professionalism, I believe. Um, and then finally on the government center campus, we have phase two of our parking lot reclamation project. With that, we are recycling the 25-plus-year-old parking lot that we have through a full-depth reclamation project. We are aligning to add 106 additional spaces in the parking lot. That will include spaces for the Armed Services Memorial that's being planned. And then we're replacing the flagpoles that we have in the parking lot to mirror the ones that are at the Streetscape. There's more to come. Our staff is building ideas to create a budget to implement Lake Mooney Park that we hope to open Memorial Day of 2016. We're hoping for fishing, golfing, kayaking, trails and maybe a nature center, nature center. So, more to come and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Cavalier?
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Porter. First, Woodlands Pool resurfacing, how'd that project go?
It's happening this fall, sir.
Oh, it's not until fall?
That's correct. We have to go out to bid.
Okay, I thought it was spring, but, oh, all right. I'll, I'll ask in.
Yes, sir.
The second one was, um, the utilization of the Old Gale Middle School. I believe that's called Gary Meltzer's complex now. Um, the gym there. Several months ago, I asked about this and perhaps the, the county could actually use it for the Parks and Rec Program because it's basically sitting there at that school unused and had, had been used for some storage, but could be used for, you know, indoor sports activities there. Do we have any progress to date on that?
Uh, we made progress and then we fell back a bit. We, um, contacted the schools and we were making plans to do programming for that facility. Um, but with the delay of a project that they had that was ongoing, I believe at Stafford High School, they ended up having to take the property back so that they can store equipment themselves there. They did offer up an alternate facility that we're hoping to program until we can get that space back.
Okay, so they, they, their storage requirement is gonna go away here soon? Do we, do we know when that may happen?
I believe it's the Stafford High School that required them to take back the building for storage and I'm not certain what the schedule is for that project. But I do not believe we'll be programming in that building this year.
Okay, but I, I hope we keep that at least on the, on the list of possibilities for future facilities because, as you know, we, we never seem to have enough space.
Yes, sir. Uh, the senior programs were very interested in using it for pickleball to have some place in the south. So we're very interested in going back in there as well.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm glad we still retain control across the street of the Courthouse Community Center. Because if we had given that up, I'm afraid it would be a storage area too and I'm not a big fan of using gyms as storage areas. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bunkie?
Um, I just have two comments. Wow, you've done a lot. Um, the skateboard people had talked about the skate park. Where does that stand, Ms. Porter?
Uh, we had plans to do, uh, repairs and improvements to the skateboard park, but when the association came to us and said they wanted to partner with us, um, then we put our plans on hold so that we could have a plan that would include what they wanted to do.
Okay.
But they planned to raise money for their portion of it. They developed plans that equated to about a half a million dollars to develop the skateboard park and they continue to raise money. Um, but we have not heard anything since the update that they'd raised about $1,300. And so after they get closer to their goal, we'll be able to reengage and, and get prepared to do the Brooks Skateboard Park.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Sellers?
What about some, uh, programming, like an adult softball league? Do we do that here?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Adult softball league is going on right now at Duff McDuff Green Park.
Cause a lot of, a lot of the folks that I know play in Prince William County and I'm trying to figure out why, why we're losing people to Prince William County if we have a program here. So, maybe it's not advertised. I didn't know we had it, but...
More marketing.
Yeah, yeah, I've never heard of it. Never, all my, all my friends go up to Prince William County, so I wanted to see why.
Me too. I'll look into doing some additional marketing and/or, uh, making sure I get you the information so that people can sign up with our program.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Porter. We appreciate what you're doing. I don't have any, yes?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, no, no agenda changes, sir. And that's my report.
Anyone wanna pull anything from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion for the consent?
They're moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Cavalier. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sellers. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes five to zero with two absent. Unfinished business, item 18, Planning and Zoning, amend and reordain Stafford County Code, Section 16 dash four, maximum permissible sound levels generally and Chapter 26, Weapons. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. The board conducted a public hearing on this matter back in December of last year, uh, specifically amending the noise chapter of the county code and as well as the weapons chapter of the county code. These amendments would, um, bring our current code up to state requirements. Also, it would clarify the ordinance, so it's a lot more user-friendly and understandable. Uh, in particular, at the public hearing, there were some questions about pneumatic weapons. Uh, we were bringing the, the local statute up to state standards, but a question was raised about, um, the use of minors using, uh, pneumatic weapons. It was deferred to the Public Safety Committee and, and discussed. And the outcome, which is reflected in, um, Ordinance 01512, would stipulate that if a minor is 16 years or, or younger, that if they are look, living in the, um, shooting prohibited area, that they must be accompanied by a parent or guardian in order to shoot the pneumatic weapon. If the person lives and is on a property outside the shooting prohibited area, um, they would need the parents or the property owner's permission, um, but would not necessarily have to have the parental, um, guidance at that specific moment that they're shooting pneumatic weapon. Um, also in the committee, uh, there was a discussion about, um, a situation that arose with Prince William County and we discussed with the Department of Gaming and inland Fisheries about some of the wording in our draft ordinance and, um, specifically, we wanted to keep in the opportunity that if we needed to, we could allow managed hunts within the, um, shooting prohibited area in order to deal with, um, species, um, proliferation. Uh, staff would recommend the board consider adoption of this proposed ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey?
I do.
Mr. Milliday?
So this doesn't deal with a map at all? This just deals with definitions of, or what, what, including some other types of weapons or sport, sports paraphernalia?
Yes, Mr. Milliday, this deals with pneumatic guns, also bows and arrows. It does not affect where you can and cannot discharge firearms, which is our shooting prohibited areas.
But it, um, it does, it's, it's more restrictive, would you say? Characterize it as a more restrictive?
This ordinance, uh, actually makes it, um, more widespread use than the current code. Uh, again, with pneumatic guns, we're making it compliant with state law, which basically says you can shoot a pneumatic gun on your own property, provided that you use reasonable care. You're not shooting across the property line, you're not, uh, shooting in a reckless manner to endanger yourself or anyone else.
So it's, it gives even pneumatic gun users more flexibility or less?
More flexibility, yes. Um, with regard to discharging arrows... With regard to discharging arrows and using bows, our current ordinance is very restrictive and not really practical in many regards. Our current ordinance stipulates that you can only discharge an arrow with a bow if you're at a designated archery range or if you're hunting. It doesn't allow someone to take target practice in their backyard to be prepared to hunt.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Sellers?
And can you just describe what a pneumatic weapon is? Just...
Yes, Ms. Sellers, thank you. A pneumatic weapon is commonly known as a BB gun, a pellet gun, a paintball gun, airsoft type of gun.
Any other questions? One question. All we're doing here is bringing up the state code, is that right? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Just bringing everything back to state code?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move fifteen dash twelve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in the discussion. Seeing none, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes five to zero with two absent. Item number nineteen, Sheriff Fire and Rescue, adopt a public safety staffing plan, proposed resolution R fifteen dash two twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, this has been worked on now for over a year and a half by Sheriff Jett, by Chief Lockhart, and by Ms. Parrott, Ms. Collins, and their staff, and the county's finance department. This represents our aspirations for public safety staffing, doesn't commit the Board to adding any staff or spending any money, and has been fully vetted a number of times over the past year through the Board's Public Safety Committee. Sheriff and the chief are here. If you have any questions, and staff recommends approval of this policy document.
Any questions of the sheriff or the chief? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Bumpkin? I apologize.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we have, on Public Safety Committee with Mr. Snellings and Ms. Sellers, had a lot of discussion about this public safety plan. I just want to refresh everybody's memory that Mr. Lockhart is currently out for, has a grant outstanding, and then we just approved Sheriff Jett in our consent agenda going for a grant with the federal government, which, you know, could be a long shot because right now the state owes us thirteen deputies, patrol deputies. And so, you know, if you look on page, let's see what page is that, where it talks about the recommendations, you know, there are significant financial implications to this recommendation, but it does have to do with public safety, which is our number one or number two priority in the county. Number one priority. So besides education, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, but I am in full support of this, but just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bumpkin. Ms. Sellers?
Anthony, are we under any obligation to follow this? I mean, this is kind of just giving people an idea of where we want to go. It's not saying we're gonna spend the money right now.
That's absolutely correct. There is no obligation. Again, this is a plan, subject to future considerations and budget realities that we face.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion or question? Just echoing what Ms. Bumpkin said, our number one priority as a board is public safety. We always have to keep that in mind. I'm sorry, Mr. Milley.
You said one or two?
No, she said one. With that said, we're running so smooth, Mr. Milley, I tell you, we're almost there, buddy. I have a motion and a second. No other discussion, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes five to zero with two absent. New business, finance and budget authorize issuance of general obligation bond, proposed resolution R fifteen dash two oh four. Come on up, Nancy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Nancy Collins, Budget Division Director. Proposed resolution R fifteen two oh four would authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars to fund parks and transportation projects approved by voters in the referendums of two thousand eight and two thousand nine. These projects are consistent with the CIP. Have you take any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Sellers?
So, they're general obligation bonds, that's why we don't have to hold a public hearing?
That's correct, because the voters approved them already.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
You might say, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you might say a referendum is the ultimate public hearing.
That's correct. It is. Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Bring it back to the Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cavalier, second by Ms. Sellers. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes five to zero with two absent. Ms. Sellers, would you take us in the closed session?
Whereas the Board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel regarding IVI strategies versus the Board of Supervisors, CL fourteen dash one-two-zero-three, and two, to discuss a discussion concerning a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating its facilities in the county.
Have a second? I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes five to zero. We are in closed session, and we reconvene at seven PM this evening. My closed session?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes five to zero with two absent. We adjourn till seven PM.
Shrink this board down a few more, and we get out of here.
Good evening, welcome to the seven o'clock session of the June second Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd ask Ms. Bumpkin to lead us in prayer, and Mr. Cavalier to lead us in the pledge, if you'd all stand, please.
Let us pray. Lord, we seek your guidance in the business that is before us. We ask for your support and prayer for our men and women in our military services across the world that continue to put their lives on the line so we can live a safer life here in Stafford County. As we salute our flag, let us remember it signifies purity, innocence, valor, bravery, vigilance, perseverance, and justice for all. In your name we pray. Amen.
Before we get started, just want to let you know, Mr. Thomas is not with us tonight. He's representing Virginia Association of Counties, the entire Commonwealth, at a NACO conference in Washington, DC. So, he'll be back at our next meeting. It's time for public presentations. I ask that if you come to the podium, that you speak on any subject unless it is, in fact, a public hearing this evening. You will have three minutes to speak. The lights on the right-hand side of the podium, as you're facing it, will go green. When it goes yellow, you have about a minute left. When it goes red, you need to wrap up your remarks. I would ask that you state your name and address for the record when you come forward. With that said, anyone on my right-hand side wishing to address the Board? Seeing none, I'll move to the left-hand side. Anyone on my left wishing to address the Board?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Pickle Lane. Thank you very much for fixing those potholes off Secondary State Road six forty-two. Seven days till Election Day, the primaries. I encourage everyone in the county who's watching tonight to get out there and vote. Vote once, vote often. You know, it's the one-man-one-vote era. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I've been working on my background information, and two of my grandmothers were very influential in my life. And not only did I learn how to count and know things about property and other aspects, one of the key sayings that my dad's mom always used to say is, "We're not making any more land." So that's gonna be one of my key terms, and I challenge anyone to try to go after that aspect. Most people know me, I'm all in favor of treetops, not rooftops. I did see that, I was riding down in the Rock Hill District looking for potholes, and right in front of my house, there was one. Also Margaret Brent, and I'm sure you all will take care of that. But as I was driving through Vista Woods, I noticed how the land is all being tore up, and I said to myself, "Holy sheets, that must be that new gas station that got approved that's gonna go in there, and all the wildlife is going around." And I had just enough time to read something that I found, what Waldowski really means in Chinese. It really means "the humble one." It says, "You're not the sort of person who talks about anything with anyone just to pass the time. You'd much rather just have a little peace and quiet to yourself. When you do choose to join in, though, you're a great listener, and your friends always turn to you for advice. It normally takes you a while to warm up to someone, but once you do, you're friends for life." I want to give you a key update that happened in Stafford Meadows. You know, we've had water problems for several years, but we did meet with the county. We have found some subsidy aspects. We are working on taking three hundred thousand dollars from our reserves. We're gonna bring our water system up to code, and then I won't keep bringing up to you that I don't get a county water and sewer bill. Look forward to the public hearings.
Anyone on my left or anyone else in the room would like to address the Board? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. Item number twenty-one, public hearing, Public Works authorize a condemnation and exercise of quick-take powers in conjunction with the Trusslow Road reconstruction project. Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Christopher Rapp, Director of Public Works. Tonight, we have a, we're holding a public hearing for the Board to consider condemnation and exercise of quick-take powers in connection with Trusslow Road reconstruction project. This project was identified as a part of the two thousand eight transportation bond referendum. The main goal is road safety, and utility relocation is underway. Dominion has been out and completed phase one of the relocation, and they're waiting to get ready for the phase two relocation. Other utilities are out there as well. The construction has started. Their clearing operations are well underway, and they're progressing nicely. We have one more property acquisition that remains, and that property is parcel forty-five J dash one dash nine. The owner is Robert A. Matthews. The county requires on this property point three-one acres for right-of-way, point one-four acres for permanent easement, and point three acres for temporary easement. This is a overview of the property. This is a closer view, and as you'll note, there is a sharp turn, and the road project will eliminate that sharp turn, and that's one reason for the acquisition tonight. As you'll notice, there's also temporary construction easement and a storm drainage and joint-use utility easement as well. The county's consultant, Rinker Design Associates, provided an offer of eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and then they met with the property owner as well in March. The property owner requested a full appraisal of the property, and we obliged the property owner. We did let him know that it could go down possibly, it could go up possibly, and in fact, the value did go down to fourteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, based on the appraised value. In the interest of settling with the owner, we did maintain our original offer of eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. The property owner countered offered at twenty-five thousand. Unfortunately, since then, he's increased it to seventy-five thousand, and we've attempted to negotiate with the property owner and address his concerns. However, we have not been able to come to a conclusion with that acquisition. So, tonight, we're recommending approval of proposed resolution R fifteen dash one-thirty-six.
Any questions for Mr. Rapp? Yes, Ms. Sellers?
Do we have any reason why he's wanting seventy-five thousand dollars for less than an acre of property?
I don't. He provided some reasons for the twenty-five thousand dollars, if you want me to go into that, but the seventy-five thousand, we weren't provided a reason.
Okay.
Supervisor Sellers, maybe I could... Yes, sir. After all the negotiations between the property owner and the staff, he retained counsel, and I think counsel has reevaluated things considerably in an upward manner. I think that's a... Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public... Thank you, Mr. Rapp. I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone on my right that would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, is anyone on my left? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move.
I have a motion by Mr. Milley, a second by Ms. Sellers. Any discussion?
Picture button.
Seeing none, please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. Item number twenty-one, planning and zoning, consider amendments to the cemetery ordinance. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. The public hearing tonight for the cemetery ordinance is proposed ordinance oh fifteen dash zero-nine. It would amend the zoning ordinance provisions regarding cemeteries in relation to development projects. Currently, our code requires that if someone's doing a major site plan or a commercial project that has a property owners' association or homeowners' association, and there happens to be a cemetery on the property, that they would preserve that cemetery and impose a buffer, and then it would be maintained by that property owners' association. That ordinance was adopted in two thousand seven, and it's been successful in helping us preserve a number of cemeteries. But the Cemetery Committee and also the Historical Commission have noted a number of cases where we've had minor subdivisions or other types of development that did not have property owners' associations. It felt as important to extend the same protections for cemeteries to those types of projects. This ordinance would do that. It would require that if there is a cemetery found on a piece of property and it's being developed for either a neighborhood or a commercial business, that a easement or a separate parcel be cut out for that cemetery as well as a protective buffer. The ordinance also has some additional language about reinterment. If a cemetery is being moved from one property to another, based on what's allowed by state code, that the county be notified. The Planning Commission and Board, as well as the, excuse me, the Planning Commission staff, as well as the Historical Commission and Cemetery Committee request the Board's indulgence to approve this ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? I have one, Jeff. You said it requires the applicant to notify the county in case there's a cemetery being moved?
Yes.
Who notifies the family? Or if, does the county notify the family of the deceased, or does the applicant do that?
We would try to see if we can find the owners, or, excuse me, the family members to notify and let them know, because unfortunately, under state law, there is no requirement that the state notify the heirs or relatives of the people in the cemetery.
And do you know who makes the decision as to where to relocate?
Typically, it's the entity relocating the remains. So if you're developing your property and you have a cemetery and you want to move the remains to another location, that you would hire a funeral service and work with the Health Department and find another location to inter those bodies.
Okay, so they have to work through a funeral service and the Health Department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. We'll now open the public hearing. Is anyone on my right like to speak for or against? Seeing none, anyone on my left?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Pickle Lane. I am for this ordinance. It's a long time coming. It's more important that we set up resolutions that affect the whole county, just displaying another weakness of homeowners' associations. When you give authority to the wrong hands, this is a very important family matter, and should be able to see a six-zero... should be able to see a six-zero vote with one abstention.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's your pleasure? I have a move by Mr. Sterling, seconded by Ms. Sellers. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries six to zero with one absent. Item number 23, planning and zoning, consider amendments to Section 22-4, definitions of the subdivision ordinance and Section 28-25, definitions of specific terms of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is to consider adoption of ordinances O-15-03, which applies to the zoning ordinance amendments, and O-15-04, which applies to subdivision ordinance amendments. We have definitions in both sections of the county code. However, over the years, there's been a number of changes to those county code sections and we found that there's been a situation where in a number of cases, the ordinance definitions do not match between subdivision and zoning. So this proposed amendment would help clarify that. Also, this amendment would further define the uses that are listed in the zoning ordinance. As you may know, from our various zoning categories, we have a number of uses that are permitted within each zoning category and we found out over the years, many of them do not have definitions. So we've proposed definitions that would make it clear to whoever's looking to establish a use, what that use is and what the appropriate regulations are. Also, in doing this effort, we've harmonized our local definitions with those of state law and elsewhere within the county code. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter and has recommended adoption of the ordinances and staff does as well.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. It's time I'll open the public hearing. Anyone on my right want to speak for or against the ordinance? Change. Anyone on my left?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane. Got my Ricky Fowler hat on. There's a proposed definition of use that's missing in here and it should be townhouses or townhomes. One of the key things of combining subdivisions and zoning is I own property in a subdivision that has condominiums and townhouses. There is a Virginia Condominium Act that superseded the Virginia Horizontal Property Act. Well, it's quite obvious that condominiums are horizontal property, where townhouses are vertical property. They only combine to row houses and only the end unit is the one that's connected with one wall. Whereas condominiums are horizontal because they have different fire codes and their doors are fire retardant, their stairwells are public, because normally in a condominium building or group of buildings, usually eight condominium owners use the same stairwell, where in a townhouse, they only use one. If we look back at UDAs and we look at housing units, it would make sense to, when we're updating this, to address the mixed-use aspects that came up in many of the numbers in the seven UDAs. And if you remember, the planning commission put us behind the eight ball with eight of them at one time. And in order, if you look at the state regs, townhouse is in there. Also, I did not see in this printout anything about single-family homes. I did see about clustering, but since I am a subject matter expert on condominiums, especially the ones that are treated as a mobile home park, which is another entity in the definitions because it's another variation of housing in the county that fits the demographics of the area. There are a number of mobile home parks. They require services, water and sewer, just like single-family houses do, there's stormwater management and other aspects. So if we're going to do things for subdivision and zoning, I really believe that you need to readjust this. You can close the public hearing and let's modify it so we don't have to wait 30 years for another update.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board on this subject? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's your pleasure?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the residential facility, the group homes, health department license, that definition, was this taken out of state code?
Yes, ma'am, it was compared to state law.
Okay, so I guess I'm just not understanding why. Some of these are included, like they're allowed in any residential zoning district by right? They don't have to go through any other process or procedure?
That's correct.
And they don't recognize the mental illness of substance abuse? They don't recognize that as a mental illness in the state code?
That is correct. State code has special provisions that deal with those types of uses and how the county can't really regulate them or in certain cases, we can maybe even prohibit them if they're not state-run.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Vice Chairman, just to clarify the comment Mr. Waldowski made, when you read the amendment, you may feel like there are a number of definitions that are missing. However, the amendment only deals with new definitions or changes to existing definitions. So the current definitions that remain unchanged were not listed in the ordinance. So we do define townhome and single-family detached and a number of other uses that are not included in this amendment.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Harvey? Bring it back to the board, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, there are two separate amendments here.
Thank you very much for reminding me of that. Yes, I need a, first motion I need for ordinance O-15-03.
All right, I make the motion to approve ordinance O-15-3.
I have a motion from Ms. Sellers, who's second?
I did, second.
Second, Mr. Milde. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. Motion for proposed ordinance O-15-04. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Sellers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Milde. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries six to zero with one absent. Item number 24. Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities authorize a land use agreement with the North Stafford Community Improvement League on behalf of the Stafford County Boy Scouts for a primitive camping site at Curtis Memorial Park in exchange for one acre of land at Government Island.
Yes, sir, you did an excellent job.
Well, thank you so much. Be a little something extra in your paycheck this week.
That is exactly why we're here this evening. I'm Jamie Porter, you're Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities, and as the chair just stated, I am here to support and I recommend approval of a land use agreement of the property at Curtis Memorial Park to NSCIL for use by the Stafford County Boy Scouts. As a result of that exchange and before that exchange, the Boy Scouts would provide to us a deed for the one acre at Government Island that is not currently owned by the county.
Any questions, Ms. Porter? I have one. I want to clarify, I think I know the answer, but just to clarify for the public, this applies to all scout troops within the county, is that correct?
It applies to anyone, yes, sir, it does, but it also applies to anyone who would like to do primitive camping in the county.
Right.
So it would be open to everyone.
It'll be open to everyone, you have to sign up whether you're a scout troop or whether you're just a citizen. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
But it does apply to everyone?
It does apply to everyone.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Porter. With that said, I will open the public hearing. Anyone on my right-hand side who wish to address the board on this, please step forward. Sir, if you'd state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm David Jones. My address is 2019 Bowie Drive, Stafford, Virginia. I am the, one of the trustees and on the board of directors for the North Stafford Community Improvement League. I would like to take a quick moment to thank you and your staff for your work and considerations regarding the land use agreement and for the opportunity to speak here tonight. This agreement will allow Stafford County, will provide Stafford County the opportunity to consolidate the Government Island property and it will give, it will provide an area, a site within the county to be used for primitive camping, hiking, or other outdoor activities. The chosen site is an excellent location for scout training. It, not only for primitive camping, but also for pioneering, wilderness survival, and other scouting functions and activities. I do appreciate you hearing this tonight and we are anxious to see this agreement executed and thanks again for helping us make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my right who wish to address the board? Anyone on my left?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane. Life Scout, 31 merit badges. My dad was an Eagle Scout, 26 merit badges. I am in full favor of anything for scout training, especially pioneering merit badge is one of the most unique merit badges that any scout can get. Also, when you're out in primitive camping sites, the Order of the Arrow is one of the elite programs within scouting that allows any scout to sit out there all by themselves. It's pretty, it's a pretty interesting fraternity to enter. I want to thank the gentleman for working as a trustee to further consolidate Government Island property and I'm also very thankful for the clarification that this is for all scouts, but more importantly, it's for all citizens who wish to engage in this primitive camping site. Look forward to that six-zero in-favor vote with one absentee.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left or anyone in the chamber who would like to address the board on this issue? Bring it back to the board, I do have one question, just more curious than anything else. What's the definition of primitive camping?
I am prepared for this question, sir.
You say you are?
I am, sir.
I knew you would be.
Primitive camping is hiking, backpacking to a wilderness area that is not preconditioned for camping with minimal gear and disturbance to the natural environment while they are there.
Satisfy my curiosity, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Milde.
If you are finished, I'd like to move approval on at least the first of the two resolutions.
I have a motion for, I'm sure I'm right with the county attorney here.
163.
R-15-163, correct? I have a motion by Mr. Milde and a second by Ms. Sellers. I haven't any discussion, I'm sorry.
I just want to let you know, if you don't know, we worked on this for quite a while. This was worked through the Community and Economic Development Subcommittee, so this isn't something that we just got handed.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. I need a motion for R-15-175.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Milde, seconded by Ms. Sellers. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries six to zero with one absent. Seeing no further business on the agenda this evening, this meeting is adjourned.